Evening, everyone. I'll call the Air Select Board to order for Tuesday, May 7, 2024. This meeting/hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting/hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in specific items on this agenda should make plans for in-person virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-908-00793 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@AIR.MA.U.S., or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. Like to say one, please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to amend the approval of meeting minutes to be prior to the new business select board member questions.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Remind me when we get there.
Yeah, exactly.
No announcements this evening?
I have none.
Okay. So then, is anyone here for public input this evening? Please come on down.
Come on down. We're coming in a crowd.
Wonderful.
So, we're all coming. So for those of you that don't know who we are, we are the folks that are planning the Independence and the Air Celebration that's going to be happening in AIR on June 22nd. And we wanted to come here tonight to formally invite you all, our select board, to participate in our parade. Working on getting some kind of fancy car to drive you along so you don't have to sweat if it's a hot day. You can be in a car. But it's on June 22nd. We'll have a parade kickoff at 12:30. It will start up at St. Mary's, walk through the center of town as we remember, down to Peroni Park. At Peroni Park, we'll have a festival, food vendors, vendors, entertainment, you name it.
Please go ahead.
They will be there. They will all be there. And so I wanted to just introduce these two lovely ladies that are with me because they are just so important to make this happen. So Beth, if you want to take a few minutes.
Hello, I am Beth Condon. I've lived in town for 31 years. And when we first came, we had a big parade, a big field day, wonderful town celebration. Stuff happened. COVID happened. And that wasn't here anymore. And we have so many new residents in town that we wanted to bring it back. So last year, we did. We had a parade and a field day, and it poured. It was a pouring, pouring day.
Pour.
Terrible, terrible. But I was in charge of the games. And we got our games in even though it poured. So it's a time for family fun. We have sack races and balloon toss and even pie eating with pies donated by our local supermarket and lots of wonderful fun things for families to do together. And that's what I'm looking for, for people to participate in like an old home day, for families to come together. And we have it early so that people can go and do their own thing for the Fourth of July. So please come, just put on your best suit with short sleeves and march in our parade or come and eat some pie.
Exactly.
So thank you.
And I'd like to introduce Becky. Becky is our woman who knows everything about finances. We can't get anywhere without Becky.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the select board, thank the town for the funding. Because without the funding, we can't put on a parade. We can't do all the things that make a parade a parade, right? I'd like to also thank the sponsors and those sponsor listings will be going out on our Independence in the Air 2024 Facebook site. So I just wanted to take that moment to just say thank you very much.
And a big thank you to Jeff and the Parks and Rec Department for all they've done down at the park and with the park and all they've done for us.
We have a lot of people to thank. We could take on your entire time if we start that.
We could be there the whole day.
But please know, we will follow up with an email to see who would like to participate and be part of our parade. We would love to have you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
It was a great time last year, despite the rain.
I do recommend a boat.
Just in case.
Anyone else for public input?
Please.
Can we turn that one on, please? Pauline?
Good evening. I'm sorry I was unmuted earlier. I didn't realize that. On a different note, first, I want to thank ladies that you just listened to. They did a wonderful job last year. Unfortunately, I was away for the weekend, but wish them luck again this year. I would like to thank Dan Van Cholik for the pedestrian crossing signs that were magically appeared this past week. But I'd also like to ask him when he anticipates striping and stenciling will take place on Central Ave.
Please.
Matt.
We have Matt here this evening.
Hi, Pauline. So I do know we're actually doing some striping work tonight on Main Street from what I was told from Dan. I'm not sure if Central Ave is included in tonight's work, but it is coming up.
Well, I'll let you know in the morning, I guess. But if not tonight, if you could at least get back to me to, I'd like to make sure that people who work in the building I work in are not in your way. I'm sure you know, Matt, there's a lot of construction going on on Cambridge Street, and we're taking up every available space we can find.
Sure.
So I'd like to get the striping out to hopefully make the intersection easier to cross. The sign helps, people slow down, but the striping and the stenciling will be an added addition. So I'll keep in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input this evening? No? Excellent, thank you. So moving on to our next item on the agenda, we have introduction of recently hired Air Police Patrol Officers.
Mr. Chair asked Chief Gill to come up for this section.
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
So what I wanted to do tonight is take the opportunity to introduce the board to some of our patrol officers that we have brought on board within the last several months or so. So without further ado, I'm going to go chronological order from oldest to the most recent ones. So what I'd like to do is have Officer Jared Spleen come on up. Jared, come on up.
Runway.
So Jared came to us last October when he graduated from the Randolph Police Academy. And he started his field training and then came off-field training and started patrol about when?
October. Er, no, off-field training in January.
In January, and he's been assigned to the day shift patrol. And he is currently our Council on Aging Liaison. Excellent. So that's Jared. And any questions for Jared?
Welcome, Jared.
No. Go ahead.
Welcome.
All right, Jared, thank you. Okay, next coming up is Jacob Knoll. So Jacob isn't unfamiliar to our area. Jacob is a graduate of the Air Shirley Regional High School, started his career in Shirley, and recently, as of December 23, came over to AIR and is currently assigned to our 3-11 Patrol. So Jared's been a huge asset coming over with some experience, especially with this general area. So this is Jacob, and we're glad to have him on board here. So any questions for Jacob?
No.
Welcome to AIR.
Welcome.
Okay, and our hot-off-the-press edition to the Air Police Department is Officer Jacqueline Styles. Jacqueline, come on up. Jacqueline just graduated from the Merrimack College Police Academy and is, and how long was that? That's a long academy. It's almost a year?
Eight months.
Eight months. And she just graduated this month, and we swore her in, and she's currently in her failed training program assigned to our specialized officers that can help bring on new people. That's Officer Gambrell and Officer Victor, and led by Sergeant Pearson. So we're excited to have Jacqueline, and Jacqueline also is not unfamiliar to the area as originally from AIR and still is in the local area. So we're excited to have Jacqueline here and on board here. So any questions for Jacqueline?
No, I do have a comment, though. I used to coach soccer against Jacqueline. And I always hated the games I had to play against Jacqueline because she was head and shoulders above everyone else. Welcome, Jacqueline.
And not here is, and the reason he's not here is because he's currently in the academy, is Connor Murphy. So Connor started the Lynnfield Police Academy about nine weeks ago, and we're expecting to have him graduate in July. And we're going to do the same thing, get him onto field training and into a patrol status right after that. And then after that, we have more to come. The Deputy Chief just led a team to interview some new applicants, and we're hopefully, we're evaluating them right now, and hopefully we'll be able to bring on one or two of them from that applicant pool.
How many open positions do you have in total?
We have total, and this is including the Admin Sergeant, so we're factoring that in. We have three.
Okay.
So we're looking, so really two openings and then the new spot for three.
Excellent.
So.
Good.
Any questions on any of these or our process or the future of AIR PD?
No questions. I thank you and the new hires for coming down for introductions this evening. It's great to put the faces with the names as there are changes within the force. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for letting me introduce them.
You're welcome.
All right, next is the recognition and retirement of Jeff Thomas, Parks and Recreation.
Come on down. He looked like he was going to stay over there.
He was hesitant to come down.
Oh, I have never done this before. You haven't retired before? No, it's my first time.
You don't have to.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, well, let's just say.
You could surprise us, say you're staying.
No, it's, it's.
Five more years.
It's working out well. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Do you want to start, Robert?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as the board is aware, Jeff transmitted his retirement for the beginning of April, and in typical AIR fashion, we haven't let him formally retire just yet. But we do want to recognize him this evening. Jeff, if I could just briefly have to turn over to the board, Mr. Chairman.
Take your time, it's a long list.
Jeff Thomas has done an excellent job in public service to the Town of AIR and the Parks and Rec Department over the last 18 years. And anybody that knows Jeff knows that he is a tireless and dedicated public servant. The parks, the beachfront, anything Parks and Rec, he treated as his own and took it to the highest level. I think most importantly, and others can probably say it better than I or know better than I, but his dedication to the town's youth is just top-notch. All of the recreation programs, whether it's swim lessons, sports teams, all the kids, Jeff is a celebrity, as we know, amongst generations that have been here, is truly to be commended. Also, he's always been an advocate to empower young adults that have had their first job, usually through Jeff's rec program, whether it was a lifeguard or maintenance worker at the parks or so forth. So Jeff, from my perspective, it's been a pleasure working with you for the last 14 years, and I look forward to completing the transition of the department. And Mr. Chair, just want to point out that Jeff's family, I believe, is here, his wife Julie, his son, daughter, grandchild.
Grandchildren, isn't it?
So, but I'll turn it to the board.
I'll actually open up to the other board members first, if you have anything you want to add.
Want to go first?
No, you go ahead.
So over the years, you didn't actually come to this table very often. So my interactions with you were few. But that doesn't mean that I didn't notice your passion. You're very quiet, you're very soft-spoken, but you always showed that you really cared. And I think that's important for people to realize, too, that you can show that you care without getting allowed. And, you know, your passion always shone through. And I can only hope that whoever, you know, takes over now follows the example that you set, because what you did has been wonderful. And I hope that you always remember that.
Thank you, Janice, and I apologize every time I said Janet.
You know, I completely forgot you did that till you said it.
I just kind of echo what Janet, what Janice says. I haven't had many interactions with you, but what I have observed in the few times that I have is that you were a great leader and you were always there doing the work and leading by example. And thank you very much for your service to the town.
Thank you, Scott. Sean.
I do it, too.
So you and I do have a long history together. You actually also coached against Officer Styles in soccer because there was one season in AIR Youth Soccer that we needed a coach, and you graciously stepped up. And that, everything you've done with Scouts, my wife is here, she was our Girl Scouts leader, and you helped with the time capsule that was put in. My experience with Troop 3 and Boy Scouts, you were always there if anyone needed help with Eagle Scout projects down in the park, down at the beach. You know, the dedication just doesn't really begin to describe, like what I observed over the years, which you were just always passionately working on everything around here. And that is going to be incredibly difficult to replace, so thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And obviously the same to you. This is your last meeting, so that's, we're going out at the same time.
Absolutely. In style. Thelma Louie's.
I really hope you're not going out like Thelma Louie.
Which one of these Thelma?
He's earned it.
I gotta forget who's who.
So we do have a certificate, which I would like to read. This certificate is presented to Jeff Thomas. On behalf of the Town of AIR, the Select Board extends its sincere congratulations on your retirement as Parks Director. The town is forever grateful for your dedicated service to the past 18 years as Parks Director. The town wishes you all the best with your retirement and future endeavors. So thank you very much.
We can get a picture?
Yes, of course.
Go right in front of the flag. The chairs. Get some light here. Okay. Come on, our family. Maybe the one time they would, right?
You'd be right to not have these stacks they wear. I worked so much over the years.
Okay, right here.
Very nice.
Great. Thank you so much.
Think I'm going to cry. Good luck.
Enjoy. Good some luck.
Can we see her? If you ever want to come back, let us know.
I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. I'm going to be helping.
Well, like Robert says, we don't let you go easily.
Pauline, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Scott. I just wanted to add my congratulations to Jeff and to Julie. We've been friends for 30-plus years, and I've worked closely with Jeff, and I wish him all the best. And if there's anything I can ever do to help either of you, I owe you both. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you, Pauline. All right, moving on, next item on the agenda, we have DPW. We have Matt this evening instead of you. So why don't you come on up?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
So DPW has three items on the agenda tonight. The first item is approval of a construction contract for Sandy Pond Road Complete Streets Improvements.
Okay.
So this project is a road project between Snake Hill Road and Patriot Way. We actually presented this to the board last, I believe it was last June. It was just a concept back then, but since then, we had a public input meeting, we got a $500,000 grant, designed the project, had a public input meeting. So we put the project out for bid, got five bids. Our low bid was $618,765 from PJ Keating. And we have worked with PJ Keating before. They are a good paid contractor, so we're recommending the board execute that contract tonight.
Any questions from the board?
Just for the benefit of anybody watching or listening, this is the same project that was discussed like at town meeting when we were talking about 71 Sandy Pond, like the improvements to that area?
Exactly. So it is a sidewalk in that area, it's new pavement, new pavement markings, new signage, so it's a complete overhaul.
No other question?
All right, excellent. I don't have any questions, thank you.
I'll make a motion that the board vote to execute the contract for the Sandy Pond Road Complete Streets Improvements projects in the amount of $618,765 for signature by the board.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. It's approved. Make them out.
The second item we have is a approval of a contract for water main replacement on Willow Road. So this work area is the very end of Willow Road. It's between Bennett Brook and the town line. So it's actually in the ongoing intersection project, it's actually right in those, in that project point. So that's a Mastod project, and actually, and it's supposed to be complete this year. So we have a water main issue, we've had several leaks there. Last year, I think we had four or five leaks, so we're trying to get this pipe replaced. So the quickest means of doing that is really working with the contract that goes out there right now. So we did negotiate a contract, a price with that contractor was a very favorable price. It works out for both of us. Mastod has agreed to include this work in their contract. So this was a little different than putting it out for bid, but this was really, for the best interest of the town to get the project done.
Okay. Just curious, a question on that intersection, how long do you think that construction will be ongoing, when do you think it'll be completed?
So it was initially supposed to be complete this month. This was last, there was some delays, and this work obviously further delays them, but it was already delayed as it was. So I anticipate it being complete the end of this year, this construction season.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No. I'll make a motion that the board approve the extra work authorization related to the non-participating agreement with Mastod for $210,000 for signature by the chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. It's approved. Make them out.
The last item we have is the execution of easement agreement across the DCR rail trail property, and this is for water main improvement projects.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how familiar the board is with this project.
If you want to give a brief overview, just for the public, that would be great.
Sure. So it's been the DPW's master plan to put in a new pipe. It's a very short piece of pipe, it's only a couple hundred feet, but it would connect Pleasant Street Extension to Jonathan Drive in the Rosewood Ave neighborhood. And that pipe would actually, not just improve that, you know, short area, but really be everything, Park Street and everything north of it, all those neighborhoods. It would improve water quality, pressure, firefighting capability, so it's a really good project. But we have to actually cross private property to do it. So to date, we've, I think we have three easements already secured, and this easement is with the DCR, it's with the state. It's the last easement that we need to actually get this project out for bid.
Excellent. Any questions?
I have none.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
I'll make a motion that the board execute the grant of easement and MEPA agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. It's approved.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Because I'll let her answer tonight. Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda is the Town Managers' Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. You have in the packet the town warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met in April. In terms of the administrative update, which sort of ties into my second item, which is the annual town meeting, since the board last met, we had a successful annual town meeting, a special thanks to everybody involved that made that a successful event, the town moderator, the town clerks team, all of the department, has the Select Board, the FinCom, and of course, the residents. All 31 articles, including the FY25 budget, passed. So we're off to the races for another year. We're looking forward to, at this point, some next steps. The 71 Sandy Pond property acquisition, as the board is aware, per the purchase and sale, upon town meeting approval, we have 60 days to close on that property. Town Council is currently preparing the closing materials on that, and we'll be coming back to the board for your final approval and signature very shortly. That's on schedule. Same with the passage of the sewer extension into Littleton. The DPW director will be working on that, and we'll have an update, don't have a timeline yet, but an update on that as it moves forward. The town clerk has informed me that all of the bylaws and all the materials on her end have been submitted, so we're in good shape as we move forward. Looking forward to working with the board on the FY25 budget, implementing it, as well as the various projects that passed. Also, just want to give the boards a heads up, as you're aware, the Senior Center Site Selection Committee continues to meet as they are zeroing in on potential sites, and I understand from the chair that they'd like to come to a Select Board meeting in the near future for an update on their activities. But all of their information is on their webpage as we move forward. And then lastly, the regional dispatch agreement will be ready for the board to review and discuss at the May 21st meeting, which is your next meeting, at least to start the discussion. So sort of coming attractions on that end. I didn't know if there are any questions from the board on any personnel matters or on administrative matters. Other than that, I'll just have one other update, which is my third item.
The only thing I want to point out, so we talked, just circling back on town meeting, you and I talked about this after-town meeting, that the budget passed without a single question.
Yeah.
And I do think that is a testament to the amount of work that goes into the forefront of getting the information available to the public and also the budget presentations that I know are painful to do at times with all the work that does come together for that. But it is greatly appreciated, and I think that's a testament to the work that we do on the forefront. So we empower the people to know what they're voting on before they walk into town meeting. So thank you to everyone involved at that.
I agree. Thank you. Agreed. And then lastly, on the, my third item is on the reserve fund transfer front. As the board is aware, per the memo, there's $175,000 in this year's reserve fund, of which none has been accessed to date. As I put in the memo, just an update, there is going to be the need for a reserve fund transfer for the Town Council Legal Services budget, largely due to unforeseen in recent property enforcement matter. We anticipate that RFT to be approximately $30,000. But all of their information is on, on their, their webpage as, as we move forward. And then lastly, the regional dispatch agreement. We'll be ready for the board to review and discuss at the May 21st meeting, which is your next meeting, at least to start the discussion. So sort of coming attractions on that end. I didn't know if there are any questions from the board on any personnel matters or on administrative matters. Other than that, I'll just have one other update, which is my third item.
The only thing I want to point out, so we talked, just circling back on town meeting. You and I talked about this after town meeting, that the budget passed without a single question.
Yep.
And I do think that is a testament to the amount of work that goes into the forefront of getting the information available to the public and also the budget presentations that I know are painful to do at times with all the work that does come together for that. But it is greatly appreciated, and I think that's a testament to the work that we do on the forefront. So we empower the people to know what they're voting on before they, when they walk into town meeting. So thank you to everyone involved at that.
I'll agree.
Thank you.
Agreed. And then lastly, on the, my third item is on the reserve fund transfer front. As the board is aware, per the memo, there's $175,000 in this year's reserve fund, of which none has been accessed to date. As I put in the memo, just an update, there is going to be the need for a reserve fund transfer for the Town Council Legal Services Budget, largely due to unforeseen in recent property enforcement matter. We anticipate that RFT to be approximately $30,000. That is to get the Town Council Budget to July 1st. We still have the April, May, and June invoices. This does happen sometimes on the Town Council Budget. Things happen that we were not aware of at the time of the budgeting. But I just wanted to give the board a heads up on that, as I have the FINCOM. The plan is to come to the Select Board on May 21st with the formal RFT. We'll have the exact number and then to go to the FINCOM for their review and approval after that. And if I could just add to that, it looks like the only other account at this point, and the town accountant is actively monitoring as the finance manager, is the IT Department is going to need an RFT as well. If you recall from my, the first budget presentation, there was security, security requirements that went into effect in March that we had to implement that were not budgeted for at that time. The IT Director, we're finalizing that as well. So we anticipate to be before you on the 21st with that as well. Both of the RFTs are well within, you know, the balance of the existing reserve fund and we'll have all of the information for you at that point, but I just wanted to give a heads up. And, but then, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions from the board, that's my report this evening.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Excellent. Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, Robert.
Minutes.
Yep, thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for April 16th, 2024. I did not have any problems or edits.
I didn't have any.
I didn't see anything.
I'll make a motion that the board, sorry, that the board approve the minutes from April 16th, 2024, as presented in the packet.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Minutes are approved. So that leaves new business and Select Board member questions. So I know that I'll open up to the board or anyone else at the table first.
So, Mr. Chair. So the very first time I met you.
Oh, no.
You were on the FINCOM.
Yep.
And I came in front of, front of the FINCOM on behalf of American Leagues and Toast 139.
I do remember that.
Because you were questioning our money and I convinced you, leave it alone.
It wasn't a lot of convincing, but I do remember. It was, you know.
And that was my first time that I met you. And then my next time was when I first ran. You got a hold of me.
Yep.
And we went down to Marcos.
I do remember that.
And we had a nice conversation. And I, I've never forgotten that because I walked away from that feeling good.
Excellent.
You know? I don't think that, you know, there's a lot of people that don't understand what it's like to, to volunteer for the town and to sit here at these tables on the FINCOM or whatever other committee and on this one. And of course, over the years, there's been some tough decisions that have been made.
Miss steps along the way, I will admit that. You and I together on that, on a couple of events.
Yeah, so.
It's before your time.
And, and it's tough because sometimes, you know, what's the worst part is, is that sometimes people get mad and they don't even know what they're mad about.
Exactly.
And yet they're ranting and raving and everything, but they just can't do one click over to find out what really happened. And I know that it can be very hard because you take it to heart sometimes. And you can't help it, you know? You have served this town in many capacities over the, how many years?
About 16 years.
Okay. And always with integrity.
Thank you.
And sometimes with some class, too. So I just, I'm just gonna, you know, I don't want to, you know, puff up your head too much, but no. I, I think that you've done a great job. And I can tell you, not only having sat on this board with you, and I know sometimes we had some rough spots.
We did.
Yep. But, you know, at the end of the day, it is what it is and we're, we're still friends.
Absolutely.
Okay. And so I just want to thank you for sitting at this table with me all these years.
Very well.
I want to thank you for everything that you've done for this town. And just know you will be missed, okay? Don't you get tiered, okay? Because I'll get tiered. You look like you were gonna get tiered for a second. No, I, I, I really hope that people appreciate all that you've done. Not just, you know, one or two meetings. There's a lot more that goes into it. And it's a lot of stress that people don't necessarily see. And you've carried it well.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work that we've done together, both when I was on Finance Committee and also sitting on this board. I do want to say, I think this board, we've been together for almost five years, the three of us. And to be on a board with very like-minded individuals who bring that sense of professionalism, that sense of dedication to community, it has been a pleasure and it's actually made this job a lot easier. We have had our disagreements. We've had our rough spots, but we've always worked together to come to an agreement. And even for the most part, if there was a two-to-one vote on anything, it was always the board. Board's will is what carried the day for even for the one dissenter, and I've always appreciated that level of professionalism. So thank you both.
Similar to what Janice says, I know I'm the.
You can just say ditto.
I'm the newer addition to the two of you. But yes, like you said, for the last five years, I appreciate and thank you for welcoming, welcoming me to this board. And always being there to help. And like you said, we're a group of like-minded individuals, which doesn't mean that we always agree, which is great. And although there have been very few two-to-one or disagreements, we have been, and you have always been respectful. And it's very much appreciated. And it's been an honor to serve on this board with you. It's a small club that we have.
It is, yes.
Yeah, and I'm glad that I'm a part of it with you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, as I told you earlier, there is a saying in municipal government that at the end of one's public service, and I don't believe this is the end, but at the end of one's public service, if you've moved the glacier an inch, that's an accomplishment. And in your case, sir, you should be very proud you've moved that glacier more than an inch in the 14 years that I've had the honor of working with you. And your dedication to the Finance Committee is top-notch and to ensure that it continues, I mean, even now. And that's when I first met you. And your service on this board for six years, and you were first Chair when COVID was starting and we had a lot of conversations at that time. And your service on the Community Preservation Committee and on BYBOARD. And you were an architect for BYBOARD and kept that going. And your service on the Personnel Board when we had one from the FINCOM days. And chairing Capitol, and the list goes on and on. You have always been passionate about the town. You've always put the town first. And one of your key things that we've talked about, and I think we all have collectively made a lot of progress on, is that you wanted the town's finances to be public and to be transparent. And that remains obviously work in progress, but has come a long way between. You were one of the authors of the town's financial policies that we've continued to update. The budget presentations, whether at town meeting or the Public Budget Forum. The concept of using the meals tax, getting the meals tax passed and using it as OPEB contribution. Your leadership there, the concept of the budget calendar, and the list goes on and on. So you should reflect upon all of your achievements there. And your expertise in finance, which is hard to find, and to find people passionate about finance, I can appreciate that. And if I may just say, I know that your lovely wife Heather is here tonight. And Heather, we want to thank you for lending him to us for the last 16 years. And obviously, your great children, Robert, Allison, and Kaylee, that I remember were with the coloring books here. And sometimes you would bring them to, to meetings. And as Selectman Livingston said, that sacrifice, we can appreciate. And just to conclude, it's been a privilege and an honor to work with you, Scott. Your leadership, your support, I'm forever grateful for. You're a true gentleman and a friend. You're always fair and honest and you always put this town first, and I know you'll continue. So don't be a stranger. And I know you're a big Star Wars fan. So to conclude, may the Force be with you always. And don't be a stranger. And all the best.
No.
So maybe before we give you the last word, as I say.
All right, thank you.
But before that, if the board wants to present, there is a memento from the board and a gift.
It's from us, of course.
But at least you don't throw it out. I know where I'm getting standing. Oh, wow. Thank you. Says Scott Hoad, Select Board. It says stuff. We'll just leave it. Yeah, if you don't mind. I'm gonna get it.
Scott A. Hoad, Select Board, 2018 to 2024, Finance Committee, 2009 to 2017. In appreciation and gratitude for your dedicated service to the citizens of the Town of Air.
I'm gonna try to get through it with humor. So I do want to say thank you to a multitude of people, but I also want to put things in perspective for everyone. So Officer Stiles, as I said, I coached soccer against her. So she is my son's age. And so as Robert alluded to, in the early days of Finance Committee, my wife was on Air Shirley Education Foundation. There were certain nights she couldn't bring the kids to her meeting, so I'd bring them here. And they'd be over in the corner, you know, coloring, reading, and occasionally they'd come up, ask questions of me. And, and that was really why I did this. Sorry. It was just to build a great time for my kids to go home. And it's been a lot of work. It's been a lot of fun. It's been a learning adventure, that's for sure. We've come a long way. My first budget cycle back in 2009, we were looking for $10,000 to pay for a lawnmower for the Parks Department and scuba breathing equipment for the Fire Department. And we, we had trouble finding that. And you go from that spectrum to having $1.5 million in free cash. You know, that's a testament to the leadership at this table, the leadership of our town. Robert, Carly, the department heads, who set a high bar on who they hire, what the expectations are of those people. Can I look at you? Sorry. But I think that, you know, I've been able to accomplish what everything Robert listed, just simply with working with great people. Like-minded people, hard-working people. I, you know, everyone speaks about my years here. I mean, there are people in our organ, in our town that I look up to, you know, who've been here longer, who do more. Jeff was always one of those. I think it was fitting that he came tonight for his retirement. I was very happy that we were able to do that for him tonight. I want to thank Carly especially for bearing the brunt of the last six years when I came over with the agenda of, we're gonna do a budget book and we're gonna do these presentations. And this is, and she always worked extra hard to do that. She was always there and supportive. So thank you so much for everything and helping me recognize that vision. For Robert, we've been working together for 16 years, right?
14.
14 years, sorry. 14 years. That's right. I've been 16, 14. I've seen two other administrators, one interim, one at the tail ends. And by and far, you're head and shoulders above everyone else that I've worked with in that capacity. I don't think that the people of this town really understand how valuable your approach to your job is to our community. Because you set the bar very high and you have built a wonderful organization here. And everything you listed off that we were able to do together is really because you just, we have an organization that has been able to handle that and, and work through that. So thank you for that. To the department heads who, past and present, thank you all for dealing with me, especially the past ones who had to deal with me on Finance Committee, dragging them in on, you know, every night during January. Because we used to meet with every department head during the weeks of January to kind of go through their budget in detail. What do you do here? What's this money for? What is that for? You know, I came here as someone who had no idea what I was getting into, a shy introvert. And I learned so much about our town, our community, the people in it, the way we work, and who we are. So thank you, everyone, for helping me be successful. And finally, I am not going away. You'll, you'll have my submission for Capital Planning Committee next, next meeting. Because I get the summer off on that one.
There you go.
Well said.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, just one last thing.
Yes.
First of all, Star Wars, great story about a galaxy far, far away.
Yes.
Star Trek is about us, where we've been, where we're going. So with that, I want to say, live long and prosper, and I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
And for the last time, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, Ed.